Call to order the Cold Spring zoning Board of Appeals meeting for May 2nd. I'm Aaron Wolf, I'm the chair. We also have Donald McDonald, Grace Lowe, Eric Worth, John Martin is not here tonight. Board members are unpaid volunteers. We all live in the village and we're appointed by the village board trustees. Got our board secretary, Michael Mel, and our village attorney, John First, is here to help us tonight with the 21 parsonage. Public hearing. We've got three things on the agenda, well, four things. We're going to continue, first we'll continue the public hearing for 21 parsonage. Then we have a public hearing for Three Rock Street for offense. And then we have a workshop for Five Railroad for a street. And we're also going to approve minutes at the end, I think. So with that, let's, let's jump back into the public hearing. We have heard from the county, so we are okay to make a decision tonight. We don't have to. I think John Martin might want to be here to participate in the, in the vote, so we can, we can wait for him and we'll, we can decide that later. We also, I think I may have suggested that we would hold it open through the 19th. So I don't want to close it early if that's out there, that it was going to be held open. But we can certainly work toward a decision without taking a vote tonight if we want to. So in the meantime, in the time between our last meeting and tonight, we have had a closed meeting with our attorney to discuss issues of precedent and, and help our understanding of village code. We've also had a second opinion from Victoria Polidoro, another attorney. And there has been some digging into the records and we've pulled up some things that might help us with precedent, namely around the Marathon applications of the past. Donald has also done some analysis of lot size area, so I think we will take a look at that and discuss that. So, Matt, you look like the only person from the public here. Do you want to speak tonight or do you want to wait until later?
I'll wait until later. I just want to make sure we close the loop on merger, our current understanding of that.
Okay. Should we jump right into that then and get it out of the way? So based on our input from John, the second opinion from Victoria Polidoro, and the past attorney opinion from Bill Zutt way back in the Marathon application, the first one, it appears that we don't really have a merger clause, is my understanding. So we don't have to worry about setting any kind of precedent there or legislating around it if we were to grant variances. We simply have a lot that is substandard and needs the variances that we've outlined in order to build on it. Would anybody like to comment on that or, or does anybody have any questions? Matt, does that close the loop?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I mean, obviously, we, you know, I was very careful when I, when I wrote to Mr. Hilfer to say, "I don't know what this means, I just know that they're in common ownership." The advice was, because I think it's such a common provision, the advice given to us was that they merged. So it's, you know, really just kind of a misunderstanding, which is good that we closed the loop. So everybody knows, the applicant, the attorney, the public, that it won't be in part of our decision, that when we look at this thing, we understand the status of the lot, that it's, it's a lot that lost its pre-existing non-conforming protections. But we, our, our code is so deficient that while it intimates merger, it isn't, it's too deficient to say a merger happened, right?
Right. So like I said before, maybe I mischaracterized it when I was first talking about it, but the bottom line is the applicant hasn't objected to the fact that they need variances in order to make this a buildable lot. And that's what they're here for tonight. The merger thing is not, it's really a secondary or side issue. The primary issue and really the one at dispute between, before this board is, you have a substandard lot, it's not grandfathered, you know, are you willing to grant the variances to make it buildable? And you can have the application of five factors to each of those variances. Luke, do you have anything new to present before we get into our discussions?
I don't, I actually...
You have a copy of the county, county letter?
I don't have a copy of the county letter.
It's just...
I just, I just have information from Jeff.
I have it on...
Actually, I do have it in email, I think.
I can give you my copy.
I can, I can give it to you.
Yeah, they don't send it.
If we're going to hold it open, which is my understanding, then I'll just, I'll just leave it for file.
Okay.
The only, I mean, I wanted to keep it pretty brief tonight. My first was I did want to close the loop on the merger, but so it sounds like that's been done and it's on the record that we are just here talking about a substandard lot and the variances needed on that substandard lot. The board had mentioned, and not that I think this would be part of the record, how other municipalities handle it. I did search some of the local codes of the municipalities, I have those, some printouts if, if the board would like them. Again, it doesn't, it's not germane to this issue, but I do have them available if you want it. What I really wanted to talk about today was in considering, a lot of what we've been talking about is the legislative intent that keeps coming up and we're trying to determine the legislative intent of this when the code was passed back in the 60s. So in order to try to help us with that a little bit, I tried to find a more recent source and in doing so, I looked at the comprehensive plan that was adopted on January 10th in 2012. And the comprehensive plan, it's a guide, per the plan itself, it's a guide to all village land use regulations, even on capital project funding decisions other than governmental agencies in the building, in the village, I'm sorry. And the plan will give confidence to homeowners and businesses that the investments they plan on their properties are sound. And basically, this was, you know, adopted in 2012 with many hours of work and input from all over the village. So what I wanted to point out was on page 12 of the plan, it's, it's section 1.1, the objective, and it's to assure zoning and land use regulations support the character Cold Spring set forth in the plan and are internally consistent. And so they make a number of recommendations. The recommendations are review and revise current zoning and land use regulations to recognize existing building forms and streetscapes and to make the regulation internally consistent in keeping with the community's vision and goal of the plan. And then 1.15 says the recommendation is adopt minimum and maximum standards for setbacks in lot width that support narrow lots, thereby continuing the small town character for new development, and that reflect more closely the existing village setbacks and lot widths, including the prevailing setback of existing buildings. And then just 1.19, the recommendation, while emphasizing the historic village character, avoid rigidity in regulations and encourage innovation, especially with regard to alternative materials within the traditional context. And then just section 1.3, which was in order to respect Cold Spring's small town character and architectural heritage, modify the zoning laws where appropriate to be consistent with the objectives of this comprehensive plan. And the recommendation is to ensure that all subdivision special use permits and site plan regulations relating to landscaping, lighting, signage, and other site features conform with zoning law as recommended by the comprehensive plan to the greatest extent practical. So really, just in looking through the plan, I think that's a good indication of a more recent legislative intent and the intent of the village and, and the people of the village to encourage, encourage innovation where appropriate and to keep with the small town character. And that does, unfortunately, the way things were, is that does incur, include small and substandard and narrow lots. That's really all I wanted to, to bring up. I know Sam had some comments he wanted to make to the board, because you've only really heard from me, so.
Sure. Well, does anybody have any questions before you run it over? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would that be, I mean, I know you haven't heard from me much. Would it be helpful if I spoke to my intent and why I'm doing this?
Yeah, that would be great.
So my, I felt like this was appropriate because, as Luke said, you've been hearing a lot from him. It's mostly because I've never done this before. I'm not a developer, a real estate person, and I've been leaning on Luke to help me out and navigate this sometimes complex process. But I thought it might be appropriate for you to explain why I've taken on this project. So I've written a little bit and I'm going to read from my phone, but bear with me. So as you turn off 301 and crest the hill in Parsonage Street, the building at 21 Parsonage is an unmistakable beacon of the past. It's an anomaly with its barn-style vertical siding and doors. At the same time, it fits right in with the fabric of the neighborhood with its gabled roof, small size, small yard, and proximity to the sidewalk. It's been standing there for close to a century and has been a witness to a great amount of change. I think it's time for the building to be respectfully updated. It may be an accessory structure by definition, but nothing about this building resembles a shed or even a garage. In the context of the neighborhood, the building looks more like a house missing a few windows than anything else. At least that's what I see when I look at it. That's why I took this risk in the first place. I'm not a developer, I'm not a real estate person, I'm a young guy who loves where I live and wants to participate productively in this community. I earn my own keep, I'm not funded in any way, shape, or form by anybody who has any sort of interest in changing the zoning laws. I choose to take risks around things I'm passionate about. I have a passion for history and architecture, and I've always wanted to build a house. That's why this property jumped off the page to me when I first saw it. It takes a very specific kind of person to want to bring this building into the current century with a respect for its past. It's too risky a proposition for a first-time homebuyer. It's too small an upside for a developer. It's too historic for a full demolition. It requires too many zoning variances to make it a sure thing. That leaves people who are operating from a position of passion for the community and a high-risk tolerance like me, the only kind of person who can really take on a project like this. This building and the project is exceptional in nature, and I believe it should be treated as such. Just like the building, as it stands right now, 21 Parsonage is a bundle of exceptions. I'm asking you for a bundle of exceptions. I hope that you look at the building and the lot in the context of the neighborhood and history and will see the future for it like I do. Do I need to stand for more questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Sam? I guess I have a question. So the, the plan is still for, for you to rent, rent it out to family members and then to other, other non-family members in the future?
Well, the fallback is long-term rental to someone who wants to rent it as a home. The primary plan is to, for family members.
Okay. So it's not, it's not your own home?
No, I live in Garrison.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. James, did you come to speak about 21 Parsonage?
No.
Did you like to? All right, so, so at this point, I think we've got some options. We can move on to discussing the merits, we can kind of figure out which way we're leaning, we can decide to wait on everything until John gets back and do it next, at our next meeting. I think we, we, my opinion is we should start to dig in a little bit and don't feel, not feel obligated to finish it all tonight. And I do want to wait for John Martin to be here so that he can participate in the vote, since he's, he's been here for the meetings and that will give us an odd number of voters should we need it.
I just had a question. If, if we're going to stay open, we will have an opportunity to speak at next meeting as well.
Yes. We could also close it and not make a decision. That's another option that the board has.
I think that the applicant has the right to decide whether they want to have a full board or they have some say in whether we close it.
I think we're, we're fine with keeping it open. I think your point that you did mention at the last meeting that it would be open, so for the rest of the public, that I think we're fine with that and, right? We're happy to keep it open and do whatever the board sees fit. I, I was just curious as to some of the lot, or if that's going to be part of the discussion, if some of the lot size review that you did.
I did, I did...
Yeah, let's get into that.
Yeah.
One of you, tell us, tell us what you did.
In our closed meeting with these, with our attorney, one question that I raised was, how do you define neighborhood? And there are a million different, you know, it can be, so I was trying to get down to some kind of mathematical number, which is always going to be incomplete, but it's something. So he suggested 400 feet within the, from 400 feet within, within, within the area of the lot that you would define the neighborhood. And another way to do it would be 200 feet. So I basically took the village map and I struck circles from the four corners of the subject lot and down the radiuses and then identified the lots that are in question and then found the average size of the neighboring lots. And I, it's just some information, some way for us to gauge. I know that you had done a, this, Matt, and my square footage has come out different than yours and I got my square footage is from the, from the Putnam County assessor's website, went to each lot, found out what, you know, they said and used that. So I think that my numbers are, I think they're, they're accurate. So, but I, I give that to you to evaluate, respond to, think about, discuss at the next meeting. It's just information. I was just trying to, I'm trying to get some landmarks here for us to talk about. Not to sway a discussion one way or the other, just information. So one thing I'd be interested in from, from you guys is how you would, how, from your point of view, how we would define what the neighborhood is there? Is it four houses down? Is it 200 feet? Is it 400 feet? Where, where would you say that we should define the neighborhood? I mean, some people would say the neighborhood, Cold Spring's so small compared to New York City, the neighborhood is Cold Spring Garrison. You could see, you know, so it's a varying, it's a moving target, but I would be interested in your thoughts on that and also, since you're just getting this now, welcome them, you know, at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm happy to, just generally when I was going through that little exercise and, and I did pull them from, as I said, from multiple listing service, Real List and, you know, so there, there might be some difference in that.
It's inconsequential.
Right. And just, my thought when looking at the neighborhood is, I just kind of think of the, you know, you have one side of Three, of Main Street, the other side of Main Street, and the neighborhood over by Parsonage, Parsonage and Parrott seem to be quite similar. And then when you get over to Paulding, it seems to me like a different neighborhood. But I didn't, you know, I didn't apply any mathematics to it, I kind of just took walking, you know, kind of my view of walking and being in the community and what I understood, that's, so there's no, yeah.
James?
I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not just here, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I wanted to ask you, one other thing you shared with, on email is the number of lots that are smaller than this one in the village. Do you remember what that was?
I did, I did that.
That's not in this packet, is it?
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't doing that to enter in the record, but that's what I did and we could copy that and share that.
Okay. So this says that there are 108 lots equal or smaller in area in the village, and they're pretty well distributed, kind of clustered around Main Street for the most part. You saw that, didn't you?
I think so.
Are all these lots built on or?
I don't have a clue. And I don't know whether some of them might be merged into their lots by now. It's the, it's the Putnam County map from like 2000, early 2000. So it might be updated, it's, I don't think it's going to be that different, but, so I don't know whether some of them are empty, I don't know if some of them are built on. I know this, for instance, you know, a couple are in this, in this neighborhood and they're built on.
Right.
And, you know, some are, one is, one lot, one very small lot is right next to my house and it's not, it's owned by the village and it's not built on. So there, there are lots like that distributed all around, and I just wanted to get a handle on what are we talking about here in terms of other lots which might become, we might get people coming in and saying they're similarly situated to this lot. So that's what I was, where I'm going on that. Again, not to sway, just to find out, get some markers here. And we'd be happy to pass that to you guys.
Sure. Keep that. James?
I have no affiliation with this project, but looking at the, this map, or thanks, this one that you provided, I think reinforces my impression of knowing that intersection there, that it's got a, a higher amount of kind of density than is generally in the surrounding area. So I mean, those, those lots, both sides of the street are smaller, the corner buildings are more urban scale, and I think it's special, it's kind of in a special context just right there at that intersection that I think reinforces, you know, the potential for a higher density at that spot. I mean, it almost seems that there was an intention earlier on when this was subdivided this way to kind of reinforce that.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we should probably hold on to that for now. Okay, any other, any other public comment? So what, what would the board like to do? Should we, should we dig into some of these issues? Kind of see where we're leaning?
I mean, we could really go either way, but I think it would be interesting to go through, start going through it, maybe set a timeline if you want to, and keep it open for next time. I think it'd be helpful to have...
Can we just discuss concerns or issues? I, like, I have a question that I would just like to throw out and get feedback from anyone who's, because I'm still in the phase of collecting background information and relevant things to help me influence my thinking. One thing that no one has mentioned that I've noticed is we're supposed to consider neighborhood character and, but one form of neighborhood character is the existence of these odd empty lots throughout the village, which are remnants of, they're historically, they speak historically of the formation of the village, the, the way houses accumulated over time, filling up an originally empty space from farm, in some cases, farmland, getting subdivided. So they're evocative, these breaks in the housing fabric, and they do have their own aesthetic and historical richness. So to what extent has that been a factor in, in, in thinking about effect on, on neighborhood character for development that would eliminate empty, odd, odd, empty lots like this? Is that, I mean, when we talk about neighborhood character, we tend to talk about the other buildings, but what about the fact of empty lots and contributing to a, the fabric in their own way?
Question then? So you're keeping the original footprint though, right? So it's not like there's a lot there and you're building something? No. So I don't think that would affect the character that way. It may visually, I don't, I don't know, that's another issue.
I drove down Parsonage today just to, you know, prepare myself and recontextualize. That building that is in that lot is very comparable in size to the buildings around it, very similar setbacks. It's very much, when you're looking down the, down Parson Street, it's very much there, very much, you know, the presence is similar to the other buildings around it. It doesn't, it doesn't, to me, seem like an empty lot. I mean, both physically and in, in that the building that's there more closely resembles the homes on the street than a shed or a garage.
James?
I would posit that the, the need for, you know, as, as the area continues to grow and become more desirable to live in and there's more and more pressure on the land outside of the village, that when we have opportunities to, to reinforce the, kind of the urban fabric of the village and serve the needs of a growing population without, you know, losing green space outside of the village, without development that is much more impactful from a sustainability point, you know, existing infrastructure, existing utilities, existing structure, and walkability is, these are all important things that I think the village should recognize as part of its attributes.
What do you mean by urban? I mean, I don't think of this neighborhood as urban, I don't mean, what do you mean?
Pardon the word, but like in, like in urban planning kind of context, the, the town planning, the village planning, character, there, there is a density, there is, you know, they're not looking to subdivide, they're not trying to squeeze something in where it doesn't exist currently. But, but working with, within the, the lot and, and lot, you know, that's been established already for the village, it's, it's a freestanding lot, somebody made the decision to, to create that lot as it is. It wasn't, you know, was it subdivided? I always assumed it was part of the brick house on the corner. And then to see, you know, when I realized when I first signed the market years ago, that it's a standalone lot, I mean, somebody made a decision and the village board at that time, or whatever entity it was that had the authority approved that subdivision.
Nobody, it, it predated the zoning code and this is the whole thing we just, this tango we've just been through, predated the zoning code. So when code came in, the, the issue was, was it owned singularly or separately from the lot next door? It was its own separate lot. Therefore, what the code says is basically that they need variances for the lot size, it's, they need area variance for the lot size and then for the building as well. If it had been owned by another lot in common with another lot, then actually, no, I'm sorry, I'm doing the reverse. I'm doing the reverse. If, say, I'm getting...
If it had been owned separately, then it would not need that.
Right. And just to clarify, the, the, the planning board never created this lot. It never obtained planning board approval because the creation of a lot predated, the creation of the planning board.
Pre-existing non-conformity.
Correct. So it was never created by the planning board, doesn't happen, there's no subdivision approval associated with this lot?
To tee off on what you're saying, oh, to tee off on what James is saying, what I wish is that we had a, what you're proposing to do is to build a cottage, or no, something like a cottage, a tiny house, you know, small, okay? And within the footprint of what the existing is now, okay? And I get it, okay? But I also, and I've said this before at the last hearing, I've been on this board for 25 years, and all I see is a parade of people coming in and saying, "My house is too effing small," okay? And I can guarantee you that's what's going to happen with this after you eventually leave, which life happens, you will, you know? And, and, and we're going to be in a situation where, in a, in my perfect world, I would love it if, America would love to live in cottages, but my experience is that America doesn't like to live in cottages. And they like a two-car garage and they like a bedroom, which has got at least a dimension of 12 feet and 16 feet the other way, and it's got a master bath and it has, you know, nine-foot ceilings and it's got this and it's got that. And I've, we, I've seen a parade of people come in here over the years and that's what they want, and one way or the other, they keep, they wear, they can wear a board down. And we talked about putting a, what do you call it?
De-restriction.
A de-restriction. But, you know, it occurred to me that, and I'd like to hear you talk to this point, that, you know, I could see a number of owners taking the risk that you took, buying the place, and then fighting it out over in Carmel to try to get that de-restriction lifted and having the village attorney having to be paid to go and fight it. I could see it. I could see it. I, my experience is I could see it. And so what I'm getting to is I wish that we had code update committee establishing a cottage classification that was worked out and was discussed and it became a part of our law. And we had on the zoning board something to go to and you did too. And we weren't creating dwelling units by variance, which is what we're kind of doing now. And I understand the predicament you're in. You know, you wanna, you see this opportunity, you have a vision. I don't disagree with the vision, okay? Not, not in the least, I don't disagree with the vision. But I see it from my point of view, sitting on a board and what, there are a lot of people in this world that don't have your vision, okay? And they don't have my vision, okay? And it's not saying that your vision's wrong and, or their vision's wrong, but it just is. And my feeling is that I wish we had a body of code update groups had worked this out and we had, James had been involved and they had worked out what a cottage requirements would be and what the setbacks would be and how it would work. And we would have, we have a, an envelope in which to then, if we had to do decisions, variances, they wouldn't be, you know, how many variances do we have here? A lot. You know, I mean, it's like we're, we're creating urban fabric by variance and that concerns me. Because I think it's gonna be 25 years of litigation afterwards. That's what I think.
Before we get into this question of the deed restriction that you were asking Luke about, I want to hear what Matt was gonna say, because he was talking about empty spaces in the neighborhood, I think.
Yeah, no, I think that, no, to James's point, and then Donald actually touched on what I was touching on is when you, you know, when you look at this as, from a planning perspective, that's exactly the challenge, right? The things that, that both of you were speaking of, James and Donald, is that once you allow this lot to be buildable, you then opened the door, right? And there, and life happens, right? So we don't have anything like a cottage use that says a lot coverage of X. What you have is a buildable lot. And like Donald says, then you're going to be subject to, look, the, you know, the next owner ends up in a wheelchair and needs a first floor bedroom and a garage and a wheelchair ramp. You'd be hard pressed to deny that, right? You know, so those are the things that, you know, it, it's great to say in this snapshot in time that it's just going to be this, this recreation of this footprint of that shed. But once the lot is made to be buildable, that you can't plan to that, right? You know, and, and that's what I always tell the board, is that you really have to plan to the extreme and that's what code does. Because life will happen and people will come in and request changes. They may have medical needs, I don't, I mean, how would you deny that? Right, you know, so you're, you've made it a buildable lot and once you do that, well then, then the rest comes, right? The question is whether it comes tomorrow or decades or never. But it, you know, it, there is, there is always the opportunity for that. So I think it's, I would caution against saying that a design plan that you see is what will ultimately be built in the first phase and then what will ultimately be there. And when you talk about neighborhood character, I think it has to be something that is sustainable, right? You know, you know, and if it is, if everybody believes the neighborhood character is the footprint of that, you know, barn, where it exists in the same shape in a home, that may not ultimately be what happens, right? And that's how you'd look at it from a planning perspective. But unfortunately, like I said, we don't have a cottage type code that says, okay, let's keep lot coverage down to X, right? And that you could say, you know, that it's, that it's fully defined in the zoning and you wouldn't have to be talking about variances, right? But we don't, but we don't have that.
We should, but we don't.
We don't now, right?
You had a question about the deed restrictions? Was that, was that your question?
I, I don't know, but I have a question about it. I think, you know, I, I understand it and, and I think it is a high bar for, it is great notice to a buyer. And it's, it's a pretty high bar for a buyer to, I think, I guess overturn. But I, I know, I've had experience with the, the willpower of a modified, motivated homeowner. And, and we're now in a situation where, you know, we have a village filled with people that have a certain amount of money. And they could afford to do something like that. So, you know, I, it, it concerns me. And I do wish we had a, we were, we were doing, we were, we weren't, we weren't creating something by variance, which is what we're, we're asking to do.
Yeah.
The predicament that you're in and we're in.
Yeah, we certainly wish we weren't creating it by variance either. I think, I mean, I think the deed restriction is certain, you know, obviously it's something, you know, we're very open to. I think, as you said, it does give notice to, to the world, you know, to any potential buyer of what can and cannot be done there. Much more so than, you know, than it would be in their face, you know? It's, people kept asking, oh, what did the title company say when you purchased about the code? Well, you know, they don't say anything about that, but they would certainly say something about the deed restriction. And it would be there for everyone. Just as, you know, the point of, okay, now we're opening up for people to sue the board and to, I mean, that's, that's in every situation. You know, my, I have clients all the time that say, well, if I do this, you know, can they sue me? Anybody can sue you for anything, whether it's justified or not is what's important. And I think part of what we're, what we're doing here is, this exercise is to, to make it so that these future, or any future challenge wouldn't be justified. You know, this is, this is a, a very unique, I think this is a very unique proposition in, in and of itself because of what exists and what has existed in the past and where it sits and all of that. So, you know, we are looking for seven variances here. We could get those down to, you know, as we've seen, we could get it down to three or, you know, whatever by moving the, the building itself. But we're asking for the seven for that very specific reason of this property. And Sam has stated, you know, if, if the board wanted him to move it back, he could move it back. If they wanted him to be more toward the center to abide by the, those setbacks, we could do that as well, you know? So I, I understand what you're saying and I, I think it's a very real fear. But it's a very real fear in every aspect of zoning and planning and people buying.
Sure.
Let's say we did that. Now let's roll ahead 15 years, you're still an attorney. Somebody comes in and say, hey, I got this lot. What would you say to the court over in Carmel to say to overturn that?
To overturn the deed restriction?
What would be, how do they do that? What's the bar? How do they, how do they, how do you, what's, how do you even, what do you talk about?
I, I mean, I guess you'd, from my standpoint, you'd be looking at the same, the same standard, you know? Is, is this restriction enforceable? Was it made, you know, was it arbitrary in comparison to the time it was made? I mean, I, I, I don't know, I think it's, I've never gone to.
Something that they would look at is if there's been a change in the community character from the time the restriction was created to the time where you're, the applicant is coming in or the petitioner is coming in to try to remove the restriction. So let's say, for instance, you grant the variance with all the restrictions and for whatever reason, the zoning has changed in the village and instead of 7,500 square foot lots, now you only need 4,000 square foot lots. So, yeah, as, as a future buyer, I would come in and argue that, well, there's been a change in community character. There's been a change in the, in the zoning and the comprehensive plan. At the time the restriction was put in place, it was 7,500 square foot lots. Now you only need 4,000 square foot lots. Therefore, you know, let, let's remove this restriction because of the changes. I mean, I think there would have to be some type of change for them to succeed.
I can ask you just to follow up on that. So your opinion would be that a deed restriction would be enforceable provide, not, unless there was some major change in the.
I guess you could also, I'd have to honestly do a little bit more research because I don't know if constitutionally, can you tell somebody they can't submit for a variance? I, I don't really know that for a fact.
I wouldn't think you could say they couldn't submit for the variance, but I think it would, it would fail.
Yeah, but you could certainly put it as a deed restriction and, you know, I'm not a hundred percent, it's not a hundred percent foolproof, but, but nothing is. You know, like you were saying, anybody can sue them for any, any reason. It's not that hard to file a lawsuit, whether it has merit is usually a different story. So what we try to do as attorneys is just try to protect our clients as much as possible. But sometimes you're not always going to make everything foolproof.
I want to follow up on Eric's original question, which is what it's known about. I, I think that there was good information in understanding that there's already a building there. But I also want to point out other places in the village where things have been built on vacant lots. One that we dealt with recently at the zoning board is the lot right across Cedar from Town Hall. It used to be a vacant lot and is now a modern looking house. Another one, which I'm not sure many people in this room would support, but was the Butterfield property, which was a large vacant land that had historic buildings on and is now totally filled up. So I don't think that supports this project itself, but it does show that the lots in the village are, are being built up. Whether that means that we don't care about the historic nature of these open spaces or that we've decided it's, that there is no historic nature to them, like, you know, like.
Well, I'm not sure. Are the, these projects considered one by one, each on their own merits? Or is there an underlying principle about before or against filling up historic odd lots? And, and I'm not, not talking about like vast open areas like the Butterfield site, but more the odd lots like leftover from haphazard building up of the neighborhood?
Well, I think really the only guidance we have is the code and the variances that are needed is what makes it hard. And then the comprehensive plan, which in some sense seems to want more rental housing or lower, you know, not necessarily affordable, but more resents.
Remember with Butterfield, an entire new district was created in zoning code for that project. So that, again, that was, that was, that, that happened before the project even was proceeded for the boards. So they had a framework within, within which to, to, the planning board had a framework within, within which to evaluate that project. I don't, I'm not su, I know, I'm not, what's the, I don't, it didn't, what's the Cedar one, Cedar Street?
The house, they wanted to put a six foot fence around the whole yard, right, right? Is it, that's Cedar.
Oh, oh, Phillips Town Town Hall. Oh, there, yeah, the, on the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
James?
Well, I'm, you know, about probably the need for a zoning update, you know? But it's germane to this, you know, my own building, how many variances did I need to renovate an existing building that's been there for 150 years, you know? I mean, I needed a front yard variance to add insulation to the existing wall structure. You know, that's, that, that, it's the same framing, building's still there, you know? It's like the, the, just the, the, the need to update and the zoning is important, but like, you're working by variance anyway. I mean, like just the, the, you know, like the, it's just a crazy concept that I would need variances to renovate a building.
All right, well, I guess I would like to, I can continue on this for a while. We have two other items on our agenda. I just kind of want to lay out my thinking and that is that I'm, I'm generally in support of the variances for the building and for the, to convert it into the house. But I do have a couple of things that worry me about it, that we can deal with if we decide to grant the variances. I'm just one person and one vote. I, I really am nervous about the idea of putting a parking spot right next to somebody's back door. And I'm also not sure that the lack of a front door facing the street is in, in the character of the neighborhood. And I think that mostly is gonna go to the historic board. But I, those are really the two, the two main things that I am, I am worried about on, on this. The neighbors all came and they said that they like it. They don't seem to want it moved one inch. I think they are probably thinking about worse alternatives that could happen there. If somebody wanted to just turn it into a garage in the middle of the lot and put lighting on it or who knows, who knows what? You know, there are other options that might be less desirable to the neighbors. That's, so that's kind of, kind of where I am. I would want us to, if we did approve it, to lay out these deed restrictions as clearly as possible. And also in our, if we approved it in our resolution, to make it absolutely clear to future zoning boards that our intent is that nothing else ever be, you know, enlarged on the building. It doesn't stop anybody from trying, but just to make sure that there's no mixed message about it. So that's, that's kind of where I am. And I'm curious what other people are, are thinking at this point on the board.
I think one of the, the things that's interesting about this particular lot, especially in the context of the surrounding neighborhood, is how many similarly size lots there are. I think it's very much in character with what's there right now. I do have a few questions about how, I mean, I think the way this building is being presented, it started being presented as something that will, it's just gonna like swap in for this other building. You know, like you're, you're not really gonna notice, but I do think that it's going to have a pretty big impact on the neighbors. People coming in and out of there and also the construction of it. The, but I think where it is, where they're proposing it remain makes the most sense. It's equidistant from both neighbors and is gonna stay the same size. So I would, I'm leaning towards being okay with this application. And I think we were, when we were talking about, we were talking about the parking space and we were also talking about giving it a little bit more leeway just in case, because it has to go through historic review as well. If we give it, if the approval comes with a, is just sort of like an envelope of area that they can slide it into. If we want, if they want to push it back, if, if they want to push the building back from where it is currently to give it a front porch or whatever, an entrance in the front. So we grant the variance for, for, the grant, the variance would be for a maximum of a certain amount.
We talked about that in our meeting with John a little bit last week. And I think what John's advice, correct me please, was that we should say exactly where the building is going to be and advise the historic board that if they don't like that because they need a porch or a front door, then they need to come back to us for an amended decision, is that right?
Yeah, I think, I think if, if the location is important to the board as far as being within the community character, then, you know, unfortunately, if there's a request to change, it may impact your, your thinking. I mean, you hate to send the applicants back and forth, but if the way they're presenting it as it's basically a replacement of what already exists, except it's going to be a living dwelling, you know, that plays a lot towards impacts on the community character. So if, if the HTRB feels like they need to modify it a lot, it may or may not change your opinion.
My thinking on, on that was that at the very least, we should reduce their variance request to bring the front plane, their proposed front plane of the, well, it's not the front, it's the side, the parsonage side, that plane in line with the plane of the house at 36 Pine, so that.
Is this consistent?
Yeah. I don't, I mean, maybe the historic board would say no, it's better to leave it where it is.
I don't think the historic board would really consider location. I think they're just kind of looking at materials, windows, you know, that kind of stuff. Maybe the porch, but, you know, as far as the siding, I don't think they're, that's not really their jurisdiction.
But if, if they did say, well, we're not going to improve this without some kind of entrance on Parsonage, then they would need to send it back to us for more room because there is.
Well, no, they can just push the, they can just push the house back.
And if we grant the variance all the way to where it is now, then they would need to come back to us for that. Is that right?
Right. So as long as, I mean, you're giving them a variance to go up to so, so far, so they don't have a problem with their rear yard. So they could, they have room to kind of move it back.
Okay.
I mean, unless you want it specifically on that footprint, if that's a big deal, you, you know, you don't want to move the footprint and you need to have the porch extending out.
Well, we did, we definitely heard from the neighbors that they did not want it moved one inch. And we don't have to go on with that, but that was their, their input. Eric or Donald, do you want to chime in?
Well, I would say I'm leaning towards supporting the application. I, I would regret the loss of, of the lot in its current state of not, of it not being a residential lot, just because I value the, the effect of a breathing space of these odd lots and the historic resonance of their leftover character. But on the other hand, I do see their advantages to creating a, a house there. The lot will be better attended, there'll just be another resident in the village to contribute and other things. So there's a trade-off, but on balance, and I, and I also think the lot owner does have rights, so, so on balance, I would lean towards supporting it pending other discussion.
And how do you feel about the, the idea of deed restrictions to help preserve the whole space? It's there now?
Well, yeah, that would be, I think that's a reasonable and desirable step.
Yeah, I was just thinking you could always restrict, you know, have a restriction against no pools, you know, and keep a certain amount of open space, so that way it kind of preserves that open lot feeling.
Yeah, for that reason, my least favorite part of the application is the driveway. Much for the reason you said, it is a, it's a loss of green space, loss of sight line, intrusion of a car into the, into the lot, just all of those things are undesirable and contrary to the, the beauty, historic and architectural beauty of the, of the village. But, you know, I do see that, there's supposed to be two parking spaces, so, and we're supposed to minimize variances, so to say that there can't be any driveway is going against that.
The applicant did come in asking for no parking spot there. Sam, is that, is that ideally what you would like?
Yeah, I've, I've heard the concern with the neighbors with snow and the general lack of parking in Cold Spring, so I understand that, and that's, hence my flexibility. But I did come with the least amount of change possible, including not putting a driveway. We added it at the request of, I think during the planning meeting, for the least amount of variances possible. That was an easy, easy one to add.
And also one of the things that came up at the planning meeting, which was discussed about the, if we, you know, if adding the parking space on the site was to use a, to not use an impervious surface, to use something similar that's down at the foundry on the trails to, to allow the grass to grow up in between. Would it be green all the time if cars there? You know, I don't know that, but that was certainly something that was discussed in order to address the fact that Sam wanted as little disruption on the, on the lot as possible and the importance of having a, a parking space.
The other thing you can do is also have them add some landscaping and fencing, especially for the, the house on Pine, someone not looking out their back kitchen window at a car parked at, you know, maybe they're looking at partially, but you know, maybe there's some trees or some fencing that's obstructing at least some of the view.
Can I add that?
Sure.
The, the plan, I know that plans can change, but my intent is that there's a hedge blocking the driveway from the, from the Pine view, from the kitchen, at the very least, but obviously this isn't the part where we decide on landscaping, but that is, that is the plan. Whether or not there's a, honestly, whether or not there's a driveway there, I would like there to be a hedge there.
I guess that puts us in a little bit of a, a bind because we're required to grant the minimum variances necessary, which would be one parking spot.
But we're allowed to use judgment, aren't we? I think the language is like.
Yeah, but the bind is that the neighbors like it the way it is and that we were, we are now in the position of telling the applicant that they need to increase the variances they're asking for if we, if we want to eliminate the parking spot.
I mean, I think from a planning perspective, to not have, you know, have a dwelling and not have a single parking space, you know, that's, that's a little risky.
Quite common, but it's all over the village, but yes.
I understand, but the village was built out in the nineteen hundreds and people had horses and carriages.
I understand what you're saying.
In this day and age of the automobile, if you're building a new, you know, I'm sure most places that don't have the driveways are probably built pre nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties.
I would imagine.
Before America's love affair with the automobile. Now, who knows, maybe we're swinging the other way. I don't know.
Right, so it's all conventional planning.
Right, but I'm just saying at this, right now, in this day and age, you know, with our dependence on automobiles.
Donald? Seems like you were, you were.
You know, I feel like, I feel like we're jumping into a swimming pool and I don't know whether we're on the shallow end or the deep end. And I, if I just think about just this one lot, and I just think about, you know, the, like James wants us to think about, just the five lots around it, I get it, I get it. But, you know, I'm thinking about going forward, the other, the rest of the village. I hear, you know, it's talking about, you know, not requiring a parking space. I would hate having that parking space by my house. If I was the neighbor, I'd be like, don't do it, don't do it. But, but sitting here on a zoning board of appeals, having people come in and go, I don't have a parking sp- I mean, you know, it's, it, so I'm, I'm, you know, I have, I'm, I don't know where, I'm in the shallow end of the deep end, so that's, I'm undecided. I don't, I don't know how to, I have to think about it more and research it more and kind of, I don't, I'm not in any rush to close the hearing. I'm not in any rush to, I think we have to really think through what's, what's happening here. That's, that's how I feel about it.
So we've, we've, one thing that I think differentiates this lot from other vacant lots is the presence of the building already. And even though it's going to be demolished, that's more of a historic review board concern because we've got this building there, it's covering the land, it's filling the visual space, but it's, you know, it's part of the, the character of the neighborhood. We're not inserting a new building into a place where it hasn't been. And that's not to, to say that your concerns about future attempts to make it larger are invalid, they certainly are, and probably people will, I mean, that's what we deal with constantly, is people want to make their houses bigger. So we can, we can continue talking if we want, or we can move, we can continue this in two weeks when John's back and plan to, near any further evidence or discussion and they take a look on. Does anybody want to keep talking while these ideas are fresh?
I feel good about what we talked about, but I, I think, you know, I think, what are we talking about, two weeks from now, another meeting?
Yes.
So I think that, that, two weeks will be very valuable in terms of reflection on this, and you probably want to think about what you say at the next meeting and reflect on it, and I think, you know.
Is, is everybody going to be here in two weeks? Oh. Matt, I have a question for you, if you don't mind, around the parking. I'm interested to hear what you think about the idea of not having a parking space there. I think at one point you mentioned that it would be unusual to have a parking space right next to their existing walkway coming out of thirty-six.
Well, I've seen that they don't have any off-street parking, so I, you know, just as a comment on the site plan, looking at it, you know, from the planning board perspective, I think it is kind of a, not a great condition to have the thirty-six Pine occupant walking across that sidewalk and somebody pulling out right next to them, right? Because they park right there on the street. So I mean, I, I, you know, it just seems to me that it's just safer to keep the driveways next to the driveways, you know, over towards the, I think it's Vaultage, on the other side, because that's very close to that, that's their, really kind of their busy entrance and exit in and out of the house, and they park on the street, because they, thirty-six Pine doesn't have off-street parking. Though they did when the lots were, had common ownership, you know, that was, it was the shed, so. I'm also wondering one thing too, because I mean, I, I kind of feel responsible for this, this deed restriction, you know, because I was kind of, just kind of, you know, spitballing it in a planning board meeting, and I think it's very difficult to, if not impossible to control, and could be costly to defend. I'm wondering if like, if, if a granted development easement or something like that is better and tighter. You know, if the, if the property owner, it looks like the board, you know, I don't know, we don't, we don't have John here, but you already have three that are leaning towards it. If this were to happen, if you could put some sort of an easement on it that the, that the owner would grant the village, that could then be monitored to say, and that's a lot tighter, because that's not, well, I've got, you know, I've got a medical need, I've got whatever, if you have an easement that's running with the land, I'm wondering if that's, you know, and that's something not, not to answer right now, but to think about.
An easement, what would you, what type of?
I don't know, what is it, development easement? You know, a development easement? You know, it's not a conservation easement, I mean, you could do a conservation easement for open land.
To allow the village to develop?
Huh?
To allow the village to develop?
No, no further development. Be honest, I'm sort of a conceptual site plan.
A non-development, like a conservation.
That's, that's like, that's a deed restriction, is that conservation easement? Yeah, that's a restriction, it's just another way of saying a deed restriction. We can, we can kind of couch it in the sense of more like conservation easement, yes?
Well, well, they're very difficult to extinguish, right? You know, the courts are very clear on what these easements are, and unless you have common ownership that then says, okay, the, the, the easement is no longer required, right, to travel over my land to get to your land, you own both, right? So the, it's extinguished, but otherwise, it's pretty difficult to extinguish an easement, in my experience, I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, it runs with the land, so.
Right, right, yeah, just a thought.
John, could you look into that to make sure we understand all the options for the restriction, or if there is some other kind of easement that we, that we could do, just to confirm your thinking? Thank you.
Are we talking about May sixteenth, continuing on the sixteenth?
Today's the second, so yes.
Sixteenth, okay, yeah, I'm with that.
And then, then one last thing. So we've talked about the idea of not allowing the parking spot on the, on the lot. If we do that, then maybe we should, or if we want to keep that open as an option for next week, maybe we should renotice the hearing to add that additional variance, just to play it safe. Doesn't mean we have to, we have to grant it. Does anybody have a, an objection to doing that? So we're going back to the applicant's original plan, which is to not have a parking, parking spot there.
Do you, do you want the mailings to be completed again with the new notice?
Yeah, we'll have to do that.
To everybody that was mailed through last time, or just the required ones under the code?
We should do the same ones.
Consistent, yeah. How many folks was it? Was it, it wasn't that many, right? Ten?
Thirty, thirty. Yeah, it went up and down the street.
Biggest notification.
Have you mailed by, was it by certified mail return?
Yeah.
I think I shut down here some post office. Certified return receipt requested?
I believe you can do it online, you can get the things. Okay, so I'll, I'll get you that.
Does the code require it to be sent by certified return?
I think it does.
I'll give Jeff my receipt.
Because sometimes you do it by registered mail, it's a lot cheaper. I know in the town of Waco, they, they allow you to do certified return receipt or registered mail, either way you have it. But if it's in the code, if the code says certified mail, then we have to do that.
Let me just check this out. Well, you know what, it may not say it exactly that way, but that's how we've always done it, so I wouldn't be hesitant to change it.
I guess just to be safer, sorry.
But it, it may be something first, I'll go.
When does that have to go out, five?
So that will have to go out on Monday, the latest, again.
Same notice, basically with different date.
I'll get you, I'll get you a new copy of the notice.
Just say no parking.
And the sign remains up.
It did blow over at one twenty.
Yeah, I saw it, it was, it was down, so.
It's up.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, and then we can move on to Hunter Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody, thank you.
We're just going to pair the notices, do we need to leave an amended notice? I haven't think about how to do it, but I want to confuse people, just to sort of confuse them and get these notices.
Why don't you do it?
So I've been thinking like an amended notice, kind of highlight it.
I'm just going to put it in the spot.
But listing them all, I need to list them all, because then people will think it's only one thing about the others.
Yeah.
However, people are going to complain about it.
Sherman, we've probably got another forty-five minutes, half an hour before you wrap.
It's all very interesting.
See you after forty-five.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
It's okay to put barbed wire on top of the fence, right?
Yeah, as long as it doesn't, uh.
As long as it's under four feet.
Before you go everywhere, electric, it's all good.
As long as it's a star.
Rusty, make it rusty.
This is a permanent condition, or is the town, we need a few more, more taxes, or?
Seems to be semi-permanent.
It's historic.
I like the rusty one.
We need a variance.
I think there's a, right?
I don't know.
I think there's a leak that caused the.
Oh, is there? Wouldn't be shocked.
Was it a bathroom or something?
No, it's, it's mostly just roof above.
Oh, it's, it's not, the second floor hasn't come up this far?
Not that far, it's a good one.
Okay, up next we have a, a public hearing for three Hunter Street. This is for a six-foot fence around the backyard and for a pergola facing furnace. Bill Sussman is our applicant. Can you bring us the cert, the mailing, proof of mailing, and then the affidavit for the sign, please? And then we'll get into the.
The affidavit for the sign. I'm sure, like the affidavit for the sign. What's the affidavit for the sign?
It's, it was in one of the emails, it says that the sign was up in your yard, and you just have to sign it. Some people have gotten it notarized, but you know.
I put it here on my receipt. I was in California, and Jeff was kind of to put the sign on my property where it's been, but you have to sign whatever.
Which one is Teacup Realty?
Teacup is Mr. Downey, he actually owns two houses. He also owned one, but no longer.
Okay, so.
I've changed my thinking.
So they, for first the sign, so you need?
I, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have the affidavit, so it's been up the whole time.
I can test it out.
I've seen it. So I think what we'll do if we, on that decision is we'll say pending receipt of, of the affidavit, just because everybody's got to bring it in.
Okay, here, I left that.
All right, so tell us about the project again, and now you can really explain why you want it.
And you asked me to do a few things last time, so I've done that for your viewing pleasure. So this is, so first of all, what I'm just going for now, based on your advice, but based on other things that were last week, I'm just going to have four foot in front and four foot neighboring James. I, I wouldn't mind the six foot, but he's a residential, and you said that's just, traditionally you haven't granted it, so.
Could you just back up and just tell us where, where are we here?
Yeah, so this is, this is front of street, this is my view, so here's my property. This is front of street, this is main street, all right? This is the river here somewhere, this is James's house, right here. This is James's view from my property.
Okay.
So, main street is behind, this is main street, this is just the other side of main street. And this is, uh, where I'm trying to get six foot here, because this is one of, two of my neighbors. I'd like six foot here.
So now, where's this side of this here, is this building right here?
Correct, this and this, so this is.
And then this here is.
This guy is here, and this guy is here.
Okay.
This is Romeo and Juliet, you know, haircutters, and this is the owner, look at it.
And those, those buildings are taller than they look on this, on these photos.
Oh, that, yeah, even if I cut this fence up, I mean, they're, yeah, we still say hello, but it's just a little more privacy. This is, you, you asked about the parking lot before, so this is, that most cars there, and this is, I, I mean, I don't know who.
Grace drops down.
Yes.
To the parking lot down here?
Correct.
To the south, is that to the south?
Uh, it's the river.
The west.
The west.
The west.
West is shut.
This is my wonderful neighbor, James, here, I can't say any of that about him, this is James right here, so. And, you know, I think, speaking of James and Judy, they're okay with the six-foot fence, but it sounds like just historically, because it's residential, that you haven't granted the pass, so, you know, I wanna be agreeable. So this is the main thing, I'm just trying to get a bit more privacy with my public-facing sides. This is the street, and I'm not gonna answer six foot, because I think that maybe look odd.
So the yellow is the proposed fence?
Correct, and I'm not asking for the pergola, just.
And then you're doing, you're, you're indicating this height of it, four foot?
Four foot.
Six foot?
Correct, that's what I, that's my revised, uh, request.
Originally, this was gonna be way up here, wasn't it?
No.
Oh, so how far back is that?
Way back, I don't know.
Because you could, I mean, you might not need a variance to put a six-foot fence on part of this, depending on, on how far back that is, and how far in you are from the.
James could probably.
I mean, if you wanted, if your pergola is ten feet in from the side there, then you could do that without a variance.
Okay, cool, so, so I guess I'm just looking for these, these two.
It's gonna be a stretch, there's six foot, six point three feet, so there's six feet right there, so the, it would have to be over in this area right now.
You'd have to make it close to your house if you wanted to do that.
If you don't do the pergola, will, will there be a gate in that?
Yeah, I'm gonna put a gate.
Where's the pergola on your, um?
The pergola, I mean, what it looks like, your, your.
Oh. Well, sort of like this, this is a. Actually, you know, there's, there's a couple of them in town, but, you know, I withdrew, just because you mentioned last time, you haven't seen anything over six feet, and the pergola's got me over six feet, otherwise. But I could probably, you know, yeah.
So this is zone, um, B, B one, and this is zone R.
R one.
And this is R one. So the, the, and then what is this, over here, over here, in back?
That's also B one.
B one.
Okay. So, we don't need to grant you a variance for the four-foot fence there.
Okay.
If you wanna put a tall pergola there, then the code says it needs to be ten feet.
I don't remember when this side they are, but I guess it's.
From this side of the yard, because you have to be, if it's twenty-five feet back.
Uh huh.
That's your front yard, and then if you're ten feet in, you might have to, you know, might be right there.
Oh, I see.
If you really want the pergola.
Got it, got it.
It might be uglier to put it by the house.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, you know, I have a dog, I just need a gate, so pergola would've been a cute thing, but, or I'll put it back in the yard zone. Won't bother anybody.
Pretty straightforward, I mean, to me, in my, in my opinion, it's straightforward, I mean, we have a clear track record of.
Yeah.
Allowing higher fences on where R means B. There, you know, uh, commercial zone, um, parking lot.
John, John was interested, um, and he mentioned this to me on a phone call, that we understand that, obviously, this is pretty clearly a nuisance, but it wasn't as clear to him that this parking lot was a nuisance, and he wanted us to.
It depends, they define nuisance, I mean.
But where is, you, you define.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my backyard, looking at, at cars isn't lovely, and, and, uh, you know, a six, you're gonna give me a four-foot fence anyway, or mitigate it, six foot, I can barely see them. It's not, it's, I can assure you, the fence isn't gonna offend them, because they're just parked there.
So the nu, the nuisance is having a commercial parking lot right behind your house?
Yeah, there's people pulling it out, and, you know, tumult, and I just want a piece of quiet, but, yeah. I mean, listen, I'm in, I'm in the town, so I'm not expecting an oasis, but, you know, just two more feet where there's commercial surrounding me.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Would the public like to see this, you've probably seen it.
One diagram.
And James, do you wanna make a comment? I'm guessing that's why you're here.
So, just to bring me up to the. How can I be so disoriented with this? This is the front, this is the.
This is existing, this is existing, that's, that's what I'm looking to say, right?
Great, and then this is six foot there, and six foot to this point, I'm just, sorry.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so it's gonna be back behind the, your cellar entrance, it'll be back, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause otherwise, you know, I won't mitigate a little, so, I think that's a nice one.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Would you like to speak in support of the?
I would like to speak, speak in support of the application.
Okay, thank you.
Love my day.
All right, uh, do we have a motion to, anybody wanna make a motion to, um, grant the variances?
Do you want to close the public hearing first?
Let's close the public hearing, sorry, I'm weak on rules.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed, any further discussion?
Yeah, let's go through the five, uh.
Do you wanna make a motion to, um, to approve it before we do that, or just go through it first?
Well, you know.
Usually, we can do it whichever way, it doesn't matter to you.
I think we've had a clear precedent as a board over the years of, of granting variances for fence. Higher fences higher than four feet on the property line, when they border commercial zones, which this does on two sides, the sides that, uh, the applicant is asking for the higher fence, and he's, um, he's, um, you know, he's, 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 uh, being, um, humble, and he's, he's asking, not asking for six feet on the residential side, he's, uh, he's, um, doing the right thing.
Okay, so let's quickly go through, if nobody's gonna make a motion, let's quickly go through the, um, criteria, and then we can have a motion perhaps. Benefits offered by the applicant can or cannot be achieved by other feasible means. I will say it can, could do plantings, however, it is, uh, as Donald said, and we'll get to that later, not a precedent, not precedent sending to have a six-foot fence, um, between the two districts. Donald? Can or cannot be achieved by other feasible, feasible means?
Well, as you say, it could be achieved by, uh, plantings over six feet. I think that we, the, we have allowed fences over six feet, because, um, plantings can die, plantings can go thin, plantings have to be maintained, um, and when you're beside a commercial property, basically, commercial parking, headlights, God knows what, um, dumpsters, um, that becomes problematic, and you need a, we, I think the code, I think the, the board, um, acknowledges that, um, uh, a, um, solidity and opaqueness of a fence is appropriate in those circumstances.
Okay, thank you, Grace?
Um, I agree with both of you, what, what the VMS said, um, the only thing I would add is the, I think the six-foot fence, that having a solid barrier would help with noise mitigation, especially with the commercial parking in the back. I think that would not be able to achieve, be achieved in a, another way, not with planting.
I agree, I have nothing to add. Okay. Will or will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood, Grace, do you wanna?
I think the impact is minimal, especially it's because it's between residential and a business district, rather than between residential, uh, two residential lots.
Eric?
Uh, and, and this particular six-foot portion is really out of sight, very minimally visible, so the, the impact is almost zero.
Donald?
I agree with the previous gods.
I agree also. Um, requested variances are or are not substantial. Eric?
It's not substantial in effect, in, in its effect, for the reasons that we've been talking about.
Donald?
Um, they're also not substantial, I agree with what Eric said, but I also think that they're not substantial in terms of precedent. They're in line, they're right in line with precedent of the board.
I agree.
I also agree with those two comments. Will or will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? I mean, will not, I would say will not, in fact, it might even improve the environmental conditions in the backyard if we're blocking some.
I would say my neighbor would let me do anything environmentally unsound.
Um, Grace?
I agree with the comments.
Eric?
I agree.
Donald? What difficulty was or was not self-created? Grace?
Um, I don't think it's self-created, because it's up against a commercial district that has its own things going on. I think the fence is just to mitigate the situation.
Eric?
I, I would call it self-created in the technical sense that, um, is, is meant by this point, I think, which is that, the, um, applicant was aware of the problem, and knew or should've known that the zoning, um, had a limit on fence size, so. I think that's what's meant by self-created.
Okay, Donald?
I agree with Eric, but I, um, I know that we do not have to find, um, of the five, we don't, it's a balancing test overall, it's not, depends on one particular thing, so.
Right.
Even though it's self-created, I don't think that that balances out the positive others, other, other, um, considerations.
Um, I agree with Donald. Um, any other comment? And then would somebody please make a motion to, uh.
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to have a vote, um, in favor?
Grace has already made a motion.
Oh, I did, okay.
You want a second?
Sorry, I mumbled.
I second.
Okay, um, all in favor of granting the variance for the six-foot fence as, um, described on the map? So it's facing the two sections of P one, um, district, but not going all the way to the front of the yard.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'll come back with the signed affidavit.
Okay, and I'll get the resolution to you, um, by mail, you still have to go to the store before.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it, nice to consider it.
I thought about trading your coat for my vote, but I decided not to.
We can talk later, I, I, thank you very much.
Okay, you're good for everything, aren't you, James?
Yeah.
You're involved in everything.
No, no, no. That one just touched me a bit.
All right.
I just, I have opinions on every one.
So our, our dog, we didn't plant our dogs there, we just wanted to move.
Okay, give me just a second to get organized. So, next, what we're gonna do, um, for you Charmaine, is we're gonna make sure you're ready for a public hearing.
Got it.
I'm not actually discussing the pros and cons.
Okay.
At this point. So, that'll all be done in front of the public. So we've got your referral from Jeff, we have an application. We have, I guess we need one copy of that, we have the plan. Got the deed, we have the survey. Got the environmental assessment form and the zoning report sheet. I have that application back for a second. Okay, so you're planning to, um, to build an accessory building, it's the shaded area.
The shaded area.
I guess maybe one of you two could walk us through it.
Yes, I mean, you know the very, the side yard, so, but, yeah, so this would be in the, we're proposing it to be back here against, basically where, um, all this, sorry, all this brick is right now, so this is the retaining wall, right? So, we would not have this brick area, which is the biggest landscape on there, and see how, when we're asking for the variances, it wouldn't be basically in the middle of the yard, like to have it kinda, because our neighbors are actually in our yard, this is how close they are to the retaining wall.
We'd like to tuck it a little further back away from our main structure.
Which is, yeah.
So this is your neighbor's building?
Mm-hmm.
It is, and if you see here, there's about a foot and a half gap between the, uh, the retaining wall and their property.
Mm-hmm.
So then, essentially, you'd wanna get close to that, if not the same.
Who owns that retaining wall?
Oh, the, the wall, I think that's actually the town, the villages, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you, tell me, remind, where is Railroad Avenue? Is that the sloping thing down to the ice cream, something on the corner?
Yes. We're still up from the depot restaurant.
And so you're, you're on the, um.
We're the first house next to the ice cream store.
Oh, so it's on the north side of the street?
Right, so the, the center block building is part of this, the commercial?
Commercial.
Three bungalows, uh, attached to the ice cream parlor.
Oh, right.
And the thing about it, it, so it encroaches onto their property, similar to the way those house encroaches onto my property, by about a foot and a half or so in this corner. This property that, um, is built out this much is actually a residential lot as well, so it's not even a B one.
So you have a retaining wall, you, you've got, as I remember, it's sloping down this way, so that you've got a retaining wall on this side, retaining earth from the neighbor.
Right.
And then, you've got concrete wall on the other side.
Which is this wall, that's the apartment.
Okay, and then you have another retaining.
Is that the neighbor retaining wall, that is stone one?
Yeah, that, that stone wall is back here off their property.
All right, okay.
So there's two retaining walls, is that right?
Well, there's the retaining wall here, a low one.
Mm-hmm.
To the neighbor, to the, I'm always disoriented to the east, um, and then towards, you know, what was Glenn Watson's house, the big white house on the hill, um, that's, that retained wall is off of their property, um, and forms the, you know, I don't know, the side yard, I guess, of the, of Glenn Watson's.
And that's a taller one?
Very tall, yeah.
So, and you think that's owned by the village?
It was repaired by. It was repaired by the village.
It was, because it did fall down, the previous owner said it fell down, it crumbled a bit. And then they had, there was a, like a dispute who was in charge of the pricing, and I guess the village took care of it. Like neither neighbor had to take care of it.
Um, so the variances you need are for the, the side yard to the east and for the back yard, and for the back, is that?
Yeah, well, I mean, the the.
And for the lot coverage?
For, no, we're okay on the lot coverage, the, uh, very, the, you know, the thing that's a little confusing is, um, the narrow lot, um, exception.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that the narrow lot exception speaks of side yard setbacks, but the accessory structure code does not speak of the narrow lot exception.
Right.
Which is a weird thing. And I'm sorry, yes, it is not conforming by, we're at thirty-four percent.
So rear yard setback, um, and then the, um, the lot coverage is four percent, and then you don't have enough, you're not stating you needed a variance for the side yards because of the, um, narrow lot provision?
That's, that's my reading of it, yeah.
Okay.
I've got a synopsis of the narrow lot, um, um, exception at the bottom of the, of the table.
So your, your house is six hundred and twenty square feet?
Yes.
Just like the tiny house we were talking about earlier?
That's the floor, the the building footprint, uh?
Oh, yeah, the foot stretch, yeah.
Um.
If you like to call it quaint.
It's definitely the direction people are going in. So, I think everything is in order. Donald, do you have any thoughts on anything missing from the application?
You know, um, um, I, I don't see anything, but I, um, it takes me longer than.
Sure.
There's a lot to, for me to absorb, so I, you know, I, I. What are we doing about the, what are you saying about the the narrow lot? Are we, or how are we doing, how are you proposing to do the side yards?
Okay, so, um, according to the, um, the narrow lot, um, exception, um, okay, so I I'm gonna just read it. Um, existing non-conforming lots in residence, uh, districts, um, if such lot is less than sixty feet wide, and how many lots are there that are that are sixty feet wide in village? Um, then the minimum side yard shall be reduced to seven and one-half, uh, feet, provided that, um, the two side yards shall total at least four inches uh, for each foot of lot width. And then the math, right, is the lot is twenty-eight feet wide. Um, and, uh, at, uh, four inches per foot, it comes out to a total of nine foot four. So, we've got seven foot six on one side, and the, um, the one foot ten on the other side towards the, the smaller, um, retaining wall to the east. Um, we're conforming to that, uh, by, by four foot eight inches, because we're a total of six foot eight, six foot six off of that side yard, lot width.
Okay.
Alright, so in other words, you're applying the, the, the small lot, the side yard exceptions to, to this, to the accessory building?
Correct, yeah.
Alright, okay.
So that's something we might wanna talk about at the public hearing, if that applies?
Yeah, I wrote that down, narrow lot exception and accessory buildings, with, with James was talking about that. So I was actually thinking about that more than I was that actually, I get what you're doing, though. What about the thirty percent? Yeah, you've got that, okay, so you got that worked out, thirty, less than thirty percent of the rear yard.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, three feet off the rear, and was it ten is the required for an accessory building?
Correct.
So there's a variance of six feet from the required ten.
Uh, seven feet.
For, uh, seven feet from the required ten
Right.
on the rear yard. So is that, that's the only variance? That would be the only variance?
That and the four percent over, um, lot coverage.
Oh, oh, it's four percent, oh, I see.
Yeah, I misspoke earlier into.
Oh, I, okay, alright, twenty-eight, thirty-four. Four percent from the requir, I get, okay.
Right, yeah, that seems, that seems, um, and then what's the, um, here, here's the elevations.
Yeah. Just, you know, they're, you know, it's schematic right now, but just to get a sense of, that it's, you know, it's, you know, um, it's less than a story and a half tall.
Right.
You know, and that it's, uh, you know, consistent with the, the, um, height requirements.
You probably don't have to go to historic for this, because it's not visible.
Um, I would assume that.
I think, I I can remember Jeff, I think he did say.
I think he did, yeah.
Yeah, I did say.
You can see our backyard pretty much on the street, especially when you're next to the ice cream parlor.
Yeah.
Um, so let's look at the, at who we wanna notify, and let me find my map. And then we can all go home. So you've got the ice cream shop, and there's nobody across the street. Have you listed them?
Oh, the, yeah, the Galifinakis, doesn't know the same name.
Garufi?
Garufi, yes, yeah.
So they're the, they're the big building, right, on the corner?
They're the building, but I think they rent out the, they're like.
The side that faces us, they.
They're like, yeah, they, they all live there, they live on the other side.
Ken, what about your neighbor up on the hill? Are they listed here? Can they see the shed from their backyard?
I don't know.
Well, they can see our entire house.
I actually.
So we should add them.
I think we should add them, we have never actually seen them before, but yeah, we should.
Yeah, we don't know the.
I think they're full-time, are they?
Yeah.
They might be part-timers. Yeah, we have Lee Barnes who owns that.
Mm-hmm.
What's so nice about the plan is that you're so clear about what's existing and what's proposed. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
So we've got, um, you should notify the whoever owns the buildings, the bungalows, whatever you'd call them.
Lee Barnes.
Whoever owns it or the tenants.
So that's Lee Barnes, on it.
Oh, no, okay.
So that's Lee Barnes, then you've got Ryan Keating, who's next door to you.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You've got the Garufis across the street, and then I would add, um, whoever owns that big house behind you.
Okay.
So add one, and, and that'll be it.
Okay.
It's a relative mansion.
Yeah, I think it's a.
It's a cold spray.
Yeah.
Hey, for us, we feel like ants below it, it does, it does live, yeah.
Um, okay, so, anybody, uh, everybody okay with having a public hearing on this at our next meeting? So you're gonna come after the, um, the parsonage ones, so that could be a while, but.
To show up at the same time.
Show up by ten.
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, okay, so I'm gonna follow up with you on what to do for the notifications.
Okay.
And we, the village takes fair placing, the ad in the paper.
Right, I put the deposit down or?
You put the deposit down on the escrow?
Yeah, the escrow.
And the application fee, so I think it's fifty?
Yes, all sorted. Yeah.
Um, so I'll follow up with, uh, with you on that, um, tomorrow or over the weekend. And the notices should go out, um, on Monday at the very latest.
Okay.
And you'll need to pick up a sign from Jeff that goes in your yard or attached to the front of your house somehow.
Sure.
So that people can see it, and bring that back when we're done.
Okay.
And you'll need an affidavit.
Okay, now we're learning.
I'll send all that stuff to you.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, um, so I think we're good, any, anything else?
Good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Grace, nice to meet you.
I figured out who you were during course of conversation.
Take all this stuff back unless anybody wants to keep it.
Do you want these photos?
Um, sure, let's add those to the application.
The cute dog photos.
Yeah, you wanted the dog.
My dad was like, can I have one of these? I'm like, they need it for the year.
I'm feeling like I want a small house now.
Tiny house.
Tiny.
Alright, well, have a good night, guys, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, somebody's backpack? I don't think it's theirs.
It was, uh, from Furnace Street.
Yeah.
That's Bill.
Yeah.
But, um, he lives next door to.
To James. Hey, James? James? Alright, let's, oh, let's do these minutes if we can. Did anybody have a chance to look at them in advance?
I did.
Um, I know there's a lot of typos, and there's some things I wanna scratch out, so here's four eighteen.
Typos in nine minutes?
No.
You work so fast, you have to, we put you through a lot. So, why don't we do these one at a time? Let's go to the oldest one, uh, so two twenty-one, nineteen. This one is Jeff's. See if there are any problems, we don't blame Mike.
You want my feedback?
Um, yeah, let me get ready to take notes. Okay, go ahead, Eric.
On the second page, uh, at the top, the list of the criteria, uh, the last one, um, and I'm, I'm gonna make the same point. It's, this recurs throughout all the minutes, um.
Oh, it says variances.
Um, well, no, um, applications should be changed to difficulty or alleged difficulty, Eric.
The applications. Yeah.
And then I think we should drop, but it's not sufficient for denial. Because I don't think that, as I've been saying before, that's not part of the criteria, criterion per se, it's an instruction to the board. That occurs on the top of the next page.
Yeah, I, I went through that one, and I, I marked them all in my copy, also.
There's a glitch in Microsoft Word, so that all the page numbers are two.
Second page number one.
And now, on page three, um, there's a bulleted list, following the text that says Jay Martin made a motion, and then there's a list of three points. Is that first, I couldn't really, is that first one accurate? Supporting posts must be placed on the property line bordering one ninety-one Main Street. Now, is that, I don't know, I can't really understand that.
Um.
Why would we require that the posts be on the property line?
I don't think we required that.
It's a condition.
Um, and we may have said it differently, that the post has to go exactly here where you said it would go.
Are we talking about, um, six chessmen?
Yeah. Two twenty-one.
You can scratch off that part.
Where, where's this, oh, there it is, must've.
So I.
The supporting posts, w- were already located by the footings that were already poured, and, um, and there was a discussion about, I don't think that was clear to the board, and I think there was some discussion about that.
Let me pull it up, and just so we can know for sure.
This would be in the resolution, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at that right now.
If there's anything. If there's nothing, we could just cross this out.
Following conditions, only for this particular gate. Gate posts are limited to the minimum height necessary to mount the posts are, yeah, it doesn't say anything about being on the property line. Supporting post must be substantially smaller than the footings shown in the exhibit.
I think we left it, the, the, the post would go in the footing that was already
Right.
created and was evident in the photos that they had part of the application.
Right, that's the. That's the exhibit B.
I changed, I heard one suggestion to change something.
So, why don't I just, um, correct those? I'll just copy and paste them. If we're gonna mention them, they should be exact, I think, so. Or we could just decide to leave it out. Donald, what's your change?
Well, I would just, uh, on the, in the beginning where it says gate, the applicant summarized the events, da-da-da-da-da, the third one, the applicant wishes to install the gate at the, I, I thought, end of driveway. Yeah, I guess that's okay. Never mind, I, I, I leave, I, I rethought my comment, it's okay. I was gonna say northwest rear corner of the residence, that's what, that's where they were, I was gonna key it off on, on the, where the house is, rather than the end of the driveway. But I think it was distinct where the end of the driveway was, so. I'm picking, I'd say it's picking, never mind.
That would be the, wouldn't that be the northeast?
Uh, I thought that was the northwest, that was the rear.
I think they're doing it the back.
Um, the east, I'm sorry, east, 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 you're right, northeast cor, rear corner.
Okay.
I think I was trying to get in there, that basically, the gate was at the rear
Of the house.
of the house, so it was, you know, back. I think that was one of the reasons why we were favorable to it, because it was set back somewhere.
Okay.
So it's a northeast rear corner of the residence.
I think that's probably good to know, to remove confusion. Because the end of the driveway could change, but the house isn't likely to change.
Yeah.
That's all for me.
Okay. Donald, anything else?
Oh, good.
Okay.
Um, somebody wanna?
I move that we, um, approved the minute. A move that we, um, approved the minutes as corrected.
One second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
Four, 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 four.
Four, four.
On the first page here, there are two references to, um, the two lots, but, um, we're never told wh- what are the two lots. So I think there should be a definition, um, which lots are meant, or what the second lot is, what the other lot of the two lots.
Okay.
And then, um, on page two, uh, Three Rock Street, um, the description of the application says add an attached dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's accurate, it's more like create an apartment inside.
Okay. I agree.
Apartment within the existing fabric of the, of the house, of the residence. Containment within the existing fabric of the residence.
I would add again on the, on, um, one ninety one main that the existing shed is just gonna be removed, we don't know if they're gonna demolish it.
On page three, under the five criteria, uh, the letter E, same issue, changing application to alleged difficulty.
Mm-hmm.
Deleting is not sufficient for a denial.
Got it. I thought we might make, um, the description of the shed placement a little less metaphorical. So in saying it stands closer to the street, instead of saying, saying it stands proud of the house, but.
What would it stands proud mean? Does that mean separate from?
I think it means sticks.
It means in front of, is how I use it.
Like you're stepping forward to play the solo, right?
No, just in front.
Okay.
Do we need to make a note of the, the elevated, elevation difference that we have talked to you about, or is that not necessary?
Um, I don't know if we need to do that in the minutes if it's not already there, because that's in the decision. Unless you think it's necessary to clarify something, or?
No, I'm just not clear on what ends up in which pieces, yeah.
Uh, well, I think we wanna be careful, um, to look out for anything that's a discrepancy between the two.
Mm, mm-hmm. So it's safer just to leave it out sometimes in the minutes.
Yeah.
I think that when you, you're on the shed, we're talk, still talking about the shed?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, where you're saying, uh, proposed location of shed is in the only area on the property where it can possibly be located. Due to grade considerations, I mean, I think that's, that's the problem. Um, we have a. You've got a steep grade drop.
And also for a street access, I think was part of that, only place.
Yeah. Yeah.
You have a very limited area, it's at street level, um, and that's where they're proposing to locate the shed, which makes a certain amount of sense.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
Nope.
Will somebody make a motion, please?
A move that we accept the minutes of four, four nineteen as corrected.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, last one, remember I'll cut off. So four eighteen, this is the long one.
Oh.
No, 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 sorry.
Four eighteen. The first bulleted item in your opening remarks, Aaron, that gives it the date of five, two nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Did you?
Um, I think we should change that to sixteen.
A little further down in that list, about in the middle, there's an item that begins the lot as a pre-existing non-conforming lot with the same owner. That just doesn't make sense to me, if, um.
Yeah, I was hung up on that same part.
Sounds like it's kind of something was left out, or something should be left out.
I think we need to, um, add that it's pre-existing, non-conforming, and have the same owner as thirty six Pine.
At the time of the, of the code.
Yeah.
I feel like if you took the bullet point below it and put it above, it would help make more sense.
Mm-hmm.
Except you basically explained that in the next bullet point.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And here again, we need to define which is the other lot, just as the two lots, without saying.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, the, the following item maybe should be merged as well, because it doesn't really make sense the way it is. An enactment of a zoning code created a lot that was not pre-existing.
Um.
It's a very complicated subject, it's very hard to get it down, but.
The minutes don't not have to be a transcription of the, of the, uh.
You know, we can just take that out.
We, we.
Yeah. Really just, one sentence could cover this, it's just simply that the two lots had the same owner at the time of the code.
Okay.
And therefore, twenty one parsonage is not a, treated as a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
So, I'll fill in Luke's name.
Mm-hmm. Uh, in that list, um, going down about twelve items, there's one that starts the lot, has his, has historically been regarded as two lots. That just doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, we can.
Take that out or fix it. I'll just take it out.
I thought they said pervious materials would be used for the parking spot.
Yeah.
I think he was getting his words mixed up, because he said it again today.
Page four, under Tom Hubling, his neighbor name, um, she should be changed to he, in the fourth item. Just a typo.
And the name is wrong also, I think it's Huber.
Under Matt Francisco, the next paragraph, the last item in the bulleted list is sort of the same problem with this single lot. Um, trying to sum up this complicated, it doesn't really come out comprehensibly.
I have one comment.
The date is wrong, a little further down on that page, um, the sentence beginning A Wolf noted, five, five nineteen, it should be five, two nineteen.
Okay.
And then right under that, Three Rock Street, correct the, um, reference to add an attached dwelling, the same as on the other one.
Okay. Donald, you had something?
Um, on the, you know, the list of, um, what the attorney, their attorney was saying, it's the last one. Overall, a one-family dwelling for residential use is in the best interest of the neighborhood, and is more consistent and desirable. I would add, then the abandoned barn, that's what he was saying.
Okay.
On the last page, under board discussion, page five, under board discussion, the, the same issue, uh, of the five criteria, the, the last one.
Okay.
That's all for me.
Anything else?
No, I think I'm okay with it.
No. Okay, Grace, if you don't have anything. Could somebody, I think I'm allowed to make motions, or would?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from four eighteen nineteen, as we've discussed.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
What did the county have to say about the, did they have anything to say?
Um, they just sent back a form that said, we don't care.
I figured, but I didn't.